Good evening. Welcome to our crowd tonight. We're going to start our caucus meeting agenda with the Oath of Office, and I would like to call on Chief Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Abashad, members of council. I'd like to approach the podium if you approve. So tonight, we're very fortunate to recognize some members of our department. And to start with, firefighter Rob Barth, would you come up front? Firefighter Rob Barth is a lieutenant EMT with the department. And Rob began his career, Lieutenant Rob, began his career with the City of Florence on August 6th, 2007. Firefighter Matt Kraft, I know he's here, I saw him, there he is. Firefighter Matt Kraft is a lieutenant EMT with the department. Matt began his career with the City of Florence on December 23rd, 2019. Firefighter Vince Lanning. Vince is a lieutenant paramedic with the department. And Vince began his career with the City of Florence on July 6th, 2015. Brandon McHugh. Brandon is a lieutenant EMT, began his career with the City of Florence on September 26th, 2016. Firefighter Candace Stewart. Candace is a lieutenant paramedic and began her career with Florence on August 10th, 2020. Firefighter Josh Tucker. I've seen Josh, there's Josh. Josh is a lieutenant EMT with the department, and he began his career on February 24th, 2020.
Congratulations. We're going to do our official swearing in, so if you could raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you remain a citizen thereof? And that you will faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of Lieutenant of the Florence Fire and EMS Department according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present constitution, that you being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel within this state nor out of it? Nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with deadly weapons? Nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge? Nor aided or assisted any person thus offending? So hope you got it. Congratulations. And now you must sign your oaths. So Melissa, we'll get those, I think they're right behind you.
Put your salsa napkin forward.
From this way, left to right. There we go.
There's an extra one right here. Is that you? Congratulations, everybody.
Congratulations.
Two signatures. One other thing, then, take them behind.
here at the City of Florence. We appreciate all of our firemen and women who have come out here to support us well tonight, so thank you all. And next item is discussion by Todd Morgan, Director of Community Development, about a consideration of Resolution R 25001A of Boone County Planning Commission recommending approval with conditions for request of Brew Team Kentucky LLC per Brian Evans applicant
whoever, please fill free the due cycle. These men and women are featured with the class.
for Georgian Beverly Rawlings owner for a 1 for 1, a zoning map amendment from Suburban Residential 1, SR 1, and Office 202 to Commercial Services 3 for an approximate 1.5 acre site located at 8109 to 8113 US 42. 2, a change of concept development plan for an approximate 0.3 acre portion of the approximate 1.5 acre lot located at 8109 to 8113 US 42. And 3, a variance reducing the buffer yard, a width along the easternmost boundary from 10 feet to 3 feet. This request is for a zone change, a change of concept development plan, and a variance for the approximate 1.5 acre property located 8109 to 8113 US 42 Florence, Kentucky. It's providing the recommendation forwarded by the, to the City of Florence, Kentucky from the Planning Commission. This was reviewed by our Boone County, or I'm sorry, our City of Florence Planning and Zoning Committee. And Mr. Morgan, if you could proceed with your presentation.
Thank you. On screen, I have the site vicinity map. We're looking at a 1.56 acre site. It has frontage on 42 and La Cresta Drive. Of course, this is the Rawlings Foundation Buildings. I think one's the Rawlings Foundation, one's the Rawlings Company. Both of these would be demolished, and a Seven Brew Coffee would be developed in its place. Again, the proposal is to rezone the land from SR 1, which is Suburban Residential 1, and Office 2 to Commercial Services to allow Seven Brew Coffee. This is the current zoning of the property. You can see the office buildings are zoned Office 2. The land behind White Castle is zoned SR 1. So again, all of that would be rezoned to Commercial Services to allow Seven Brew Coffee. This is the concept plan that was submitted with the application. It shows a 538 square foot building. That's the primary building. There is also a 238 square foot cooler and storage building. They all tie together. As far as access, it will be full ingress, so cars could turn in left in here, also right turn in. So this is your ingress point. This would be a channelized right out only. And there's also a southern driveway that goes out. So the Planning Commission actually conditioned this driveway. It has to be a 14-foot one-way out only, and that would allow customers to come up to the light and turn left if they were going westward and away from the interstate. As far as the drive-through lanes, you can see there's two of them. 24 cars can stack in these lanes. And workers greet you with iPads. There are new menu boards on site. As far as some other features I'd like to point out, there is the full buffer yards on the rear. These are code compliant. So there's this 30-foot wide with a fence in this area, and then it goes up to 60 feet wide with a lot of landscaping required. So again, the buffer yard up against the residential area is compliant. There's also this underground detention vault, so most of the stormwater would go here, and of course, it would be released in this area, slower release to address stormwater impacts. The Planning Commission also analyzed two variances. The first one was right here. It was a reduced that buffer down from 10 feet to 3 up against White Castle, and that was needed just because you can see the width of the driveway. The other variance was withdrawn. It was to reduce this driveway aisle down from 20 feet to 16. I actually recommended that be withdrawn, and the reason being these parking spaces were able to be reduced, and that driveway aisle was able to be made 20 feet wide. Excuse me. So this is a view of what a Seven Brew Coffee looks like. This is one in Arkansas, so ours in Florence would look very similar to this. This was a sample board they submitted for this store. Again, it correlates back to the one in Arkansas I just showed you, as far as the brick, the metal, and also the ethos. As far as the dumpster enclosure and cooler building, those would all match with that same Nietzsche-ha brick. Would like to point out, as far as a little bit of site history, back in 84, there was a zoning map amendment to allow the Rawlings Foundation Buildings to be rezoned to Office 2. That's what the change of concept plan is about. As far as site topography, you can see stormwater does drain towards the residential area, so it's 900 feet above sea level where my pointer's at, 890. But again, that water would be captured by that new underground detention vault. Aerial map of the site, so you can see the two buildings that would be torn down. The new southern driveway would come out right where this notch is at in the property, where my pointer's at. And again, the area along the southern property line would be landscaped with either a 30-foot wide or 60-foot buffer. Some views of the properties, so again, these are the two existing office buildings that would be torn down. Of course, the adjoining properties, most of them are zoned Commercial Services, so Tire Discounters to the north, C3. White Castle, C3. O'Reilly's is also C3. This is a view of the access point on La Cresta. So you can see, of course, see the signal in the distance. There was a Planning Commission condition that this sidewalk would be extended down the full length of the subject property. This is a view the other way on La Cresta. This is Jamison right here. So there's a little bit of an offset intersection here. I did ask the city engineer about that, and they did not have any concerns about that. So that is in your staff report, that correspondence. This is the rear property line, so this is up against the residential area. Again, the buffer would be enhanced. For reference, you can see the White Castle sign. Also a view looking towards White Castle and looking towards O'Reilly's. And again, you can see some of the residential fences. As far as the comprehensive plan, it forecasts a majority of the site for commercial uses, a smaller area for residential. I would like to point out and stress that this is not supposed to be an exact. It's subject to refinement interpretation by not only the Planning Commission, but also the legislative body. And also like to remind everyone that a 30 to 60-foot wide landscaping buffer will be going on that rear property line. These comments were made during the public hearing. There was questions about public notice. Of course, Mr. Costello from the Planning Commission explained that. Talks about a blind spot, La Cresta not being suited for access, and there's issues with stormwater. And again, I believe most of those, especially the stormwater one, has been addressed, and I really don't see the blind spot. The Planning Commission voted to approve this 12 to 1. I'm just going to read over two of these conditions. The first one is that access in the southern portion of the lot was only allowed to be a egress point 14 feet wide. And that easternmost curb cut is, needs to be channelized to channelize traffic towards the interstate, and only right-hand turning movements could be made. And a variance would only be approved if the city takes final action. And the reason that's on there is the Planning Commission takes final actions on variances. Of course, the P&amp;Z Committee met last week, and again, we added seven additional conditions, which I'm going to leave on screen. I'm just going to highlight two of those. The first one, the city engineer shall review the location and orientation of the underground detention outflow pipe and associated riprap and channel liner to mitigate stormwater impacts when adjoining property owners to the south. We also, once again, noted that this chain is drive-through only, and there is no serving of food. So it's basically, that condition reads that if the restaurant were ever to change from beverage sales only to food and beverage sales, it would have to be reevaluated through a change of concept plan process. And of course, that would be Planning Commission recommendation to council. And we would want to look at the traffic queues and basically traffic as a whole. So I will leave the concept plan. That pretty much concludes my presentation. If there's any questions on this, I'll be glad to take them.
Are there any questions? Let's see.
I'm reading through here, and it says something 101.27 average. Is this cars that would be going to this business likely during their peak hours during the morning?
I am actually going to bring up the applicant to address the traffic. I told him to be prepared to address the questions or worries about the traffic study.
I had a flat tire on the way up. So I'm Brian Evans with Seven Brew. Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Could you repeat your question, please?
I was just looking, and it says 101.27 is the average rate for vehicle trip generation. So is that, am I looking, is this telling us what to expect for however many cars will be going through there and during peak hours?
So on a peak hour, looking at some, I looked at 10 locations. Our peak hour tends to be 7:00 AM to 8:00 AM, or 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, kind of dependent on the location. And we see about 79 to 80 vehicles on average in that peak hour in the morning. The traffic study, so we, you know, we started this process last summer, had discussions with KYTC as well as the city, and came to the conclusion that we were going to do a study based on the ITE Trip Generation Manual. KYTC looked at it, the city engineer looked at it. Neither saw any negligible impacts on the traffic system.
So Josh, can you tell me maybe another business that gets that same type of volume?
I guess, first thing, we're not seeing that 100 number that you're describing. We've got it at 52.
So this was in the staff report on page six, so this would be Exhibit A?
Yeah, it's like two pages past that, so.
Yeah.
But I mean, even on that one that says 52, the next column says 96. I'm just trying to get an idea of how busy this business is expected to be. And maybe, I'm not very good at picturing these number of cars. Maybe you could tell me a place that maybe gets similar traffic.
Read into the record what, what it states.
So this is what the staff report, trip generation for the proposed use will generate 52 AM peak hour trips and 22 PM peak hour trips.
So I mean, I don't, when we look at these, we don't look at how it compares to other businesses. We do, but we don't. So I don't know how to give you an answer of what other light business generates that much traffic. We look at the existing road conditions. Specifically, we dialed in on La Cresta. We know that most of the traffic movements are going to be towards 75. Those people leave their house, they're going to get coffee and turn right and go out. The biggest thing that we dialed in on was how would it impact La Cresta? We had VIOX evaluated, and they felt during the peak periods, it was between two and three cars per traffic signal timing as a transition that would be at that light, a worst-case scenario. So it wouldn't create excessive stacking on La Cresta. And then the other thing that we look at is the stacking standards to make sure that you're not stacking out and impeding traffic on US 42. So we analyzed all that, had VIOX verify it, and they confirmed that it does not do either of those.
Yeah, and the last thing I had them evaluate was that offset intersection with Jamison, and made sure they felt that was safe. And that's in that email as well. They looked at that and did not see that as a concern.
Fortunately, we, you know, the CarMax project, you remember voting on that last year? VIOX did the traffic study on that, so they compared the growth projections and the amount of semis going in and out, and vehicle traffic from that study, and compared it with this traffic, and it all checked out. So we did not just take existing conditions, we looked at future conditions as well.
Diane, did you have a question, comment?
Well, I think Josh addressed part of that. Tom Zarlinski, one of the commission members, did ask that question about CarMax, and Kevin Costello said that he would check on that to find out what the status was, other than the fact that the hotel had been torn down. And so when you do look at the conflicting traffic, the trucks coming off of Jamison, the cars coming out there, what does that potentially do to the residential traffic on La Cresta?
It's a good point. So what we did analyze, and the one thing that we asked VIOX to do was take a look at what they projected for CarMax. The good thing about this use category in CarMax is the offset. They have different peak periods, right? So most of the time in the morning, that's going to be your busiest time for a coffee shop. It's going to be more afternoon for a car dealership. And car dealerships by nature, especially ones that don't have a big mechanic shop, they're not high turnover uses. The biggest thing you have to deal with there is the amount of semis that are dropping cars and picking them up and hauling them out. And from memory, and I think it's analyzed in here, it was two per day, two to three per day. And there's no real way to project what time those go through. You know, it's kind of when they get here and where they're coming from. But VIOX did evaluate that because they did the traffic study for CarMax.
Yeah, it says two to three.
Yep.
Any other questions? I encourage you, if you do have any questions between now and next week, to reach out to Todd or Josh. Next is discussion for consideration of Resolution R 25002A of the Boone County Planning Commission recommending approval with a condition for request of Connections Skills for Life Incorporated per Deb Gears applicant, for Kathleen Bishop owner, for a change of concept development plan and commercial services plan development, C3 PD District, for an approximate 0.88 acre site located at 45 Cavalier, Florence, Kentucky, and providing the recommendation before to the Florence City Council. Florence and City Planning and Zoning Committee did meet with regard to this request, and Mr. Morgan, I believe you're going to present a presentation.
Yes. Thank you again. Of course, on screen, we're looking at 45 Cavalier Boulevard. It's approximately 0.88 acres. Of course, this is Cristo Rey Church for some orientation. What this is, is a change of concept plan to allow the building to be occupied by a life learning skills center, daycare, medical office, or other associated uses. So just an aerial map shows the building. It's 5,000 square feet. It's got 43 parking spaces on site. As far as a little bit of site history back in 1995, a concept plan was approved to allow a 5,000-square-foot medical building. This is the floor plan that was submitted by Connection Skill for Life. What they are is a nonprofit facility dedicated to serving individuals aged 11 to 21 with high functioning autism. And you can see the layout. It's mostly office and family areas. What they've also laid out with their, so that is the primary use that would occupy the building. And what they've done is they laid out some other uses if they were ever to vacate, that they wouldn't have to come back through the change of concept plan process yet again. So these other uses I have on screen are sought in the event that that ever happens.
And those were uses that were arrived at by the Planning and Zoning Committee?
No.
Or by the Planning Commission?
No, there's been some further revisions to that, which I'm going to go over. So this is their original proposal. So this is what they originally sought. They also laid out a landscape plan. If you look at the property out there, there's very little landscaping, so this would enhance the landscaping to be more code compliant. And this was one of the Planning Commission conditions as well. As far as the zoning of the site, you can see it's zoned Commercial Services Plan Development. Picture of the building. Again, you can see the lack of landscaping along the street. Just some orientation, the back of Ramkes. I'm looking the other way towards the other medical office buildings and some of the hotels. Of course, the comp plan does forecast it for commercial uses. These are some of the questions that were asked during the public hearing. One was about the apartment that was shown in there, and that came back. That was just used as a, kind of a learning prop, so someone with autism could learn how to make a bed. There will also be no more than 30 people in the building and 10 people per classroom. And largely, it's an after-school program during the week and one Saturday per month. Planning Commission voted to approve this based on the landscape plan that I showed you. That landscaping and the Planning and Zoning Committee also added a condition addressing what exact uses would be allowed. So of course, the Learning Light, the Life Learning Skills Center, which is the autism center, and these would be the additional uses which would be allowed in. A few were stricken, just because the parking lot is not that big, and we didn't feel like some were appropriate, like a convention center, for example. Can't see a convention center going in there when there's, you know, only 40-some parking spaces on site. That's pretty much it for this proposal. Like the other one, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Anyone in the council having questions? All right. Seeing none, next we have discussion of the Resolution R 25003A of the Boone County Planning Commission recommending approval with conditions for request of SMJ International on behalf of Tesla per Aaron Adelman applicant for Meyer Stores Limited Partnership Owner for a change of concept development plan and Office 2 Commercial 2 Plan Development Houston Donaldson Study Corridor Overly District for approximate 0.16 acre portion of the approximate 22.28 acre lot located at 4990 Houston Road, Florence, Kentucky, which is the Meyer property. Todd?
Thank you. Of course, we're looking at the Meyer site on Houston Road, Meyer Drive. You can see this dark blue rectangle. That is where Tesla wants to expand, so do more superchargers in the parking lot. So of course, you can see the existing Tesla charging. This would be the new area where the arrow is at. So it would be located between these two landscape islands, closer to this one. So you can see by this plan, it's 24 parking stalls being converted to 16 charging spaces, 14 standard, 1 ADA, and one truck trailer space. There would also be a new equipment enclosure in this island. That's a blow-up of that, so you can see the standard stalls, the ADA, and this is the truck and trailer. This is the new enclosure, which would match the existing enclosure in the parking lot. There's some views of what the, you know, chargers look like, also the enclosure. Again, the enclosure would match, so it's basically going to look like this. And these are the Trex gates. Again, that would match. The property is zoned Office 2 Commercial 2 Plan Development. Of course, that is not changing. Comp plan forecasted site for commercial uses. This is just a view of that landscape island that would block it from the store, the area. This is that back island, and there's a condition that an additional tree be added in this area. Of course, we're looking at the Meyer site on Houston Road, Meyer Drive. You can see this dark blue rectangle, that is where Tesla wants to expand, so do more superchargers in the parking lot. So of course, you can see the existing Tesla charging. This would be the new area where the arrow is at, so it would be located between these two landscape islands closer to this one. So you can see by this plan, it's 24 parking stalls being converted to 16 charging spaces, 14 standard, 1 ADA, and one truck trailer space. There would also be a new equipment enclosure in this island. That's a blow-up of that, so you can see the standard stalls, the ADA, and this is the truck and trailer. This is the new enclosure, which would match the existing enclosure in the parking lot. There's some views of what the, you know, chargers look like, also the enclosure. Again, the enclosure would match, so it's basically going to look like this. And these are the Trex gates, again, that would match. The property is zoned Office Two Commercial Two Plan Development, and of course, that is not changing. Comp plan forecasted site for commercial uses. This is just a view of that landscape island that would block it from the store, the area. This is the back island, and there's a condition that an additional tree be added in this area. And the Planning Commission recommended this to us unanimously. It's based on the submitted plans. They showed rock mulch, and that was required to be changed to just standard mulch, because that's what code requires. And you can see the condition about the additional tree being required in that landscape island. And that was pretty much it. The P&amp;Z Committee did not add any additional conditions on this one, or is not recommending them.
Are there any questions? All right. Seeing none. Is there anyone on council who desires recognition? Any department heads? Anyone in the audience? All right. Oh, yes.
Hi, Mark Napack, on behalf of Aaron Adelman and Tesla, I'm the applicant. So the conditions about the tree, could you maybe go back to where the tree in that island was proposed?
It's...
Yeah, there's another one, maybe a couple more forward. Yep, that one there. I noticed the stop sign that's there, if there's a tree that is required there, then that could visually impact that stop sign. Just wanted to bring that to the, to the commission's attention.
It's an interior parking lot, so it's not a...
It's not a city-maintained stop sign, but we will evaluate the type of tree you plant there to make sure that the overhang of those trees do not block that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, just wanted to bring, I noticed that, wanted to bring it to the attention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. For the mayor's report, just want to report that, have you stopped by the president's display right out front there? It'll be in the lobby this week until Friday at 4:00. It's a great way to check out our presidents. If you have not done so already, register for upcoming Books and Bottles of Evening Program. That's Friday, February 28th, from 6:00 to 8:30 at the Florence Nature Park Event Center. And the author speaking for the evening will be Ashley Dubois, author of an inspiring memoir that's Yes, But I Still Have Joy, and Patricia McLean, known for her engaging secret sleuth series. I think she's wrote over about 40 books. Guests can enjoy light appetizers and a cash bar. Tickets are $15 and can be purchased through our link on Eventbrite. As part of the Book and Literacy Festival, we will feature a Saturday morning children's program on March 1st from 10:00 to 12:00 at the Florence Nature Park Event Center, 7200 Nature Park Drive in Florence. This event will feature an author storytime with Brittany Thurman and Jen Spalding. Puppet show by River City Puppets and the Boone County Library will be there with their Dolly Parton Imagination Library. The event is free. We will be hosting a citywide St. Patrick's Day Scavenger Hunt from March 7th through the 17th. Throughout the city, there will be nine giant Irish symbols hidden. We encourage participants to capture their journey by taking photos at each stop and emailing their photos to scavenger.hunt@florence-ky.gov. Participants that send all nine will receive a pot of gold prize. The first clue is, go where they stand, the leaders who guide this bustling land. Outdoors where the mayor's steps are known, the symbol you see there is clearly shown. Be on the lookout beginning March 7th. The Florence Police Department will hold their Police Citizens Academy beginning March 26th through May 14th. It's an eight-week class. It'll be held on Wednesdays from 6:30 to 9:00 PM, and the application is available on the City of Florence website. Please contact the Florence Police Department at 859-647-5420 for more information. And watch your mailboxes this week for the 2025 City of Florence Community Guide. This guide will be available for online viewing on our website and through a link on our Facebook page as well. There is no need for a closed session, so entertain a motion to adjourn. Ms. Whelan, second by Mr. Nguyen, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.